Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First item on the agenda is a proclamation. Next week is National Library Week. It's my pleasure to issue a proclamation that reads as follows. Whereas libraries are not just what we have for people, but what we do for and with people. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. And whereas libraries are evolving in order to serve their communities and to continue to fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. And whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through their innovative STEAM educational programming, maker spaces, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading. And whereas libraries and librarians are looking beyond their traditional roles and providing more opportunities for community engagement. And whereas libraries support democracy and effect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, or socio-economic status. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore I stand worth, Mayor of the city Beatrice proclaim April 10th through the 16th, 2016, as National Library Week. I encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarian. Because of you, libraries transform. Witness my hand and official seal. City of Beatrice, this fourth day of April 2016. And with us is our city librarian, Lorraine Riedesel. Lorraine?
Some of you have a little poster in front of you and I'd just like to highlight some of the things that are going on or will be going on this month. We celebrate all month long. We can't fit all the things we want to do into one week. So, we do have an art exhibit going on right now that was done with the Art Department of Southeast Community College here in Beatrice, and it features many local artists. So I think you'd be really pleased. And we are using it as an experiment to see what it is like to actually have an art exhibit on the lower level. So, to see that the panels are correct and just to see what the lighting effects are like and so on. So this is a sneak preview chance to see what will it be like on the lower level with art as we're beginning to utilize that area. Stitch One Read Two is an art group, art crafts group that meets and shows their projects and talks about what books they're reading. And they meet every month. We have a library book sale, and that is the old traditional one where we take over a great big room and get all the books out. We've been doing a continuing book sale for the last year because we didn't have room. So, this is the first time we've had a big book sale like that for over a year. We traditionally do a leadership book discussion at Valentino's in the middle of the month. And we're doing this as a lunch effort. So you come buy your own lunch and you can see that we're reading the classic, You Can't Send a Duck to Eagle School. Some of you, that's about a 10-year-old book that's making a comeback. So, we're sharing that. We have a seed library, as some of you know, and we work with the Extension Service. They're doing a program right now on eastern ash borers and why we're not replanting ash trees in the city of Beatrice because they're dying sadly enough. In conjunction with the Centennial of World War I, which the American involvement with that is just, we're just getting to that 100-year anniversary. We're reading a book about what was going on in the home front, particularly what was going on in terms of Germans and the prejudice and the propaganda that was anti-German-American at the time. And that book is called Unraveling Freedom. We're having an open house which coincides with the closing of the art exhibit. And that will be the 24th, the last Sunday. So again, if people haven't been in to see the building, this is a chance to see the art exhibit and just look around and see what's happened in the last year or two since we started our renovation. We're working with the Doll Lovers Club to do a program on dolls. And this is dolls made of all kinds of materials. You'll notice it covers about a 40-year period. And then the Homestead National Monument invited us to take our annual spring program that we do each year with the genealogists and work with them. They have a woman named Rebecca Wingo who is coming to talk about family records and the Homestead Records Project they have and how that does help family researchers. So we'll be joining forces with them and meeting at Homestead that time. So, that's some of the events that are going on this month. And you're welcome to join in any and all.
Right, Lorraine. Any questions of Lorraine from anybody?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lorraine. The councilor reminded me that the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. Next item is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on March 21st, 2016 as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of minutes of work session meeting on March 28th, 2016 as on file in the city clerk's office. Item F, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $163,982.65. Item G, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $17,380.45. Item H, approval of bid from TH Construction Company in the amount of $18,750 for the Sarah Road Water Main Improvements, 2016 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item I, approval of bid from TL Excavating LLC in the amount of $46,011 for the 16th Avenue and Hoyt Street Water Main Improvements, 2016 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item J, award bid from RL Teeman Construction, Inc. in the amount of $332,410.97 for the Standing Bear Trail 2016 project. Item K, Resolution Number 5886, executing Amendment Number Four to the City of Beatrice Board of Public Works Employee Health Plan. Item L, Resolution Number 5887, executing the New York Amendment to the City of Beatrice Board of Public Works Employee Health Plan. Item M, approval of public funding request from the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $5,000 for the Homestead Days 2016 event. Item N, approval of public funding request from Gage County Relay for Life in the amount of $624, I beg your pardon, for the Relay for Life event. Item O, approval of public funding request from Main Street Beatrice in the amount of $525 for wayfinding, identification, signing for public parking areas. Item P, Resolution Number 5888, approving a request from the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce to close Highway 136, which is also known as Court Street, from 3rd Street to 19th Street on Saturday, June 18th, 2016, between 8:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. for the Homestead Days Parade. Item Q, Resolution Number 5889, authorizing the mayor and city administrator to sign documents for the Nebraska State Recycling Association Grant. And Item R, Resolution Number 5890, entering into a lease with the Gage County Office, I beg your pardon, with Gage County for office space and the Beatrice Police Station used by the Gage County Probation Office. Are there any items that any member wants removed from the Consent Agenda? Rick?
Mayor, I will abstain from O.
Okay. Dwight? Anybody else? Anyone from the public? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I approve that all the items listed under the Consent Agenda, with the exception of Item N, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that all items under the Consent Agenda with the exception of Item N be approved. Your vote please. That is approved, eight, zero. Discussion on Item N. Mr. Partey? I beg your pardon.
Mayor, I approve that for the approval of public funding request from Gage County Relay for Life in the amount of $625 for the Relay for Life event be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that all items under the Consent Agenda, I'm sorry. That we approve the public funding request for Gage County Relay for Life, and it was seconded by Mr. Partey. Your vote, or discussion?
I guess my question is, and I hate to be the bad guy on this one because I know it's a very, very worthy cause. It looks like to me it's just a plain donation. I don't see on the form there's any matching money. I don't know if there's a cost to put this on, if any other things are rendered out. It looks like more donations. I really don't want to start giving out donations to very worthy causes. So I'm going to vote no, and I would hope we just don't start that tradition of donations.
Well, I think you have some representatives of Relay for Life. They can come forward and speak with regards to the program.
If you'd state your name and address, please. That'd be great.
My name is Lori Stewart-Walt. I live at 1510 South 8th.
And I'm Brian Sotoff, 2525 Elk Beatrice.
And I am the Mission and Survivor Lead Chair with the Gage County Relay for Life. What questions do you have?
Normally when we do public funding like this, we have matching funds. It covers the cost of something. Is there a cost to you guys to put this on?
Yes, there is.
Is everything donated, or what do you pay for out of this besides giving things away?
As an example for last year, because we did come and present our request and we were granted funds last year also. We presented at the end of last year our direct expense of $2,069. And we were able to receive the $500 that we had requested at that time.
So, do you do rental stuff, or is this just? I'm just trying to make sense of it.
Hiring a DJ, that type of stuff, yes.
What we do is we do the DJ. We provide survivor medallions, signage promotion. There are luminaries that we purchase expenses for that and glow sticks that we put inside.
It would just be easier if next time on the form there would be numbers put down here for use.
We can do that.
Okay.
When you fill them out. I mean, usually everybody else that requests this stuff does put down other funding sources so we know that we're not giving the sole money to put this on.
Okay.
Okay, we can sure do that.
You know, while I have the floor, how much money did you raise and where's it go? You might as well give yourself a little pitch here while you have the radio and the TV.
Last year, we raised approximately $54,000. It was throughout Gage County, of course. We do hold it at the fairgrounds. It's April 30th this year, from 12:00 noon until 12:00 midnight. The funds go towards the Relay for Life, the American Cancer Society, by either luminaries that people purchase or donations themselves. The money goes towards different things. Here in Gage County, it goes towards rides, helping with rides, getting cancer patients to and from. There's also a Hope Lodge that the funds go towards and also for research on trying to discover cures for cancer itself. Those are just a few of the items that are paid.
Okay, any other questions?
They're building another new Hope Lodge up in Omaha, aren't they?
Yes, I believe so.
Anyone from the public? All right, your vote please. That is approved, eight, zero. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no public hearings or bids. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 5891, entering into an amendment, entering into the amendment to an agreement between the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, and Gage County, Nebraska Area Growth Enterprise to provide for additional funding to Engage.
Mayor, I approve that Resolution Number 5891 be passed and adopted.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that Resolution 5891 be passed and adopted. And I, this has come to the forefront. Not only are we looking at this, but also is our other funding partner, which is Gage County, in an effort to try to take Engage and the structure of Engage to the next level. And that next level is the possibility, if this funding request is approved, that we would hire an additional person to try to attract business and industry to our community. And with us tonight is Engage Director Andrea Schaefer. And Andrea, if you want to come up and if there's any questions, probably can't get real specific with any hiring processes simply because this funding request has to be approved first before we go to that next level. The county would have to do the same. And I think we want to mirror, and they want to mirror whatever the city does.
For the record, Andrea Schaefer, 2008 Elk Street, Beatrice, Nebraska.
Any questions of Andrea?
Well, perhaps we should, we're talking another $100,000 with the two entities that are putting in. Right now, you've got $200,000, $100 from us, $100 from the county. And it is my understanding that we have never hit that $100,000 yet.
We've not spent that, that is correct.
What's the most that we have spent in a year? $78,000? There you go. So that's $22,000 left that hasn't been hit. Out of two, well, excuse me, that'd be $122,000 that hasn't been hit since we've got.
No, I'm sorry, that was for the year ending 2015, 12/31/15.
That was our portion.
That's correct.
Of the $100,000, okay, then we are $22,000. So we're asking for a 33 and a half, or 33 and a third percent increase. And I understand you wanting to bring a big gun in. And I, I guess we just, I don't have enough information of what the salaries are going to be, if there's going to be three-person unit out there, if we're going to reduce staffing out there, reduce salaries. I just, I don't have that much information. I don't think it's appropriate here to be discussing salaries and stuff because...
Well, the Engage Board has that responsibility to discuss the salaries. We've discussed this in closed session regarding the processes and what ultimately could occur. But the responsibility for the Engage Board is to make those decisions.
I understand that. I'm just having a tough time justifying another $100,000.
The fact that we allocate another $50,000 doesn't mean we're going to spend an additional $50,000.
But the money has to be in place.
That is correct.
So that puts that money up from other projects that we may need to use it for. And where they haven't, where they haven't even hit what we put in there, I don't understand why we need to add another $100,000 because they can come back at any time. If they've hit the $200,000 between the two entities and they need more money, they can come back at any time and request extra money from us. And I'm sure if we're seeing that we're getting a process or we're getting a bang on our buck, that we'd be more than happy to give them more money if that's what it needs to continue with a success. But I, I just, I don't think I've got enough information. You know, we talked about that, like you said, in closed sessions. But I just, I don't feel real confident about doing this, confident about doing this. So, I don't know what the other guys think.
Well, I would urge the council to support this. It's not just from the information that we've, excuse me. It's not just from the information that we've discussed here, but if you'll go back to the inception of this, these are actually the dollar amounts that we had talked about initially. You know, we said that, and actually when we talked about this, that they might go higher than that, than what's being asked for now. And I think somewhere down the road, that's probably going to happen. I think you need to look at the success that the Engage Board has had to date, that Engage itself as an entity has had to date since it's been restructured. I can appreciate what Rich's concerns are because you're taking public funds and making them private funds. And, but it's not, so you have two choices. You can either trust the Engage Board, or you can try to micromanage it. And I suggest that you trust the group. Their funding comes up annually. And if it's not money well-spent, then you can address it at that time. But this is information that we've had from the inception. We knew as a body that this was probably going to be the dollars amount that we're going to have to be spent. And I think to date that they've done a pretty, you know, they've managed the money well. They've let us know. Lynna's reports, when she's brought it to us, there's never been a question about where the money's spent. I mean, there wasn't anything vague. And I agree with the mayor. This is just the next step in the progression. And I would urge the remainder of the body to vote for this.
Any other comments from anyone? What about the public? Anything Andrea?
I would just like to add that Engage is working on a number of projects currently. And we are on the cutting edge, or right on the edge of landing some really, really exciting projects. The unfortunate part about economic development is you can't share that information. So Rich, I can understand your concern, but I want you to know that we're working very, very hard to bring success to Gage County. And I feel like we're on the right track. And I think that this, by asking for additional funding, that this will help us make that next step and hopefully bring additional success to Gage County. You know, as far as the funding goes, it is retroactive to expenses that have already been incurred. So, you guys get a report of that each month. You know where our funding is, where it's going, what the expenses are. And I've been on this board since the beginning as a volunteer. And I feel like we have been very, very prudent of the taxpayers' dollars and we are very cautious about that. So, I don't know if that makes you feel any better, but I'm a taxpayer too. And I think that we're all working together to bring success to Gage County.
Any other questions from anybody? Thanks Andrea. Bob, I'm sorry?
Based on the city council representative and voting person on the Engage Board, I'll abstain.
Very good. All right, gentlemen, your vote please. And that is approved, five to two with one abstention. Kerr and Catlin vote no. Resolution Number 5891 has been approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks Andrea. Next item on the agenda is a public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anything for the public forum? Rich?
I just want to tell the public, if they haven't been down to the West Scott Street Ball Field, to go down and take a look at them. Mr. Pethod and some of the other supervisors in our city employees has done a tremendous job down there. It is, it is, it's probably one of the finest facilities, in my opinion, that we have now in the city. It's gorgeous. Go down and take a look at it. It is, it's beautiful. And I want to thank the guys because they did an outstanding job on that.
Thanks, Rich, for bringing that up. Anybody else?
That goes for the new skateboard park too.
Anyone else for the public forum? Anyone from the public? All right. Next item on the agenda is an update that Tobias is going to give us regarding some capital improvements.
Right. We've got a number of capital projects going on. We want to update you on some. Some of those, we need some input from the council as to funding sources as we move forward. Because we're going to start with talking about the trail project from Dempster's southeast out of town. This goes down to the recycling center where it'll be concrete. And then from there on out of town, about approximately two miles is going to be gravel like the one on the north side of town. That project, we approved a bid tonight in the amount of $332,410.97. In your budget, you'll see that you had budgeted approximately, I think, $262,000? $262,500. We have a grant from Games and Park paying for $250,000. We put in $12,500 of Keno money to make the match. Obviously, it came in about $70,000 over budget. When Lynn and I sat down and started looking at some ways and some alternatives, one of them that we would propose to you is to take the $70,000 shortfall for that project and pay for the rest of it out of Keno funds. We paid our $12,500 match out of Keno funds, and you could pay for the rest of it out of Keno funds. That's one option. Another option is to find another project to defer to a later year. The one that would obviously pop up right away would be the trail from Dempster's back to Trailhead Park. Because that's all general fund dollars, there's no match. That would be a project, if you wanted to defer, you could defer to a later time.
I think that one should, if it's inside city limits, we should get it done. Absolutely. That's our main focus on the trails, is to get our city done.
Good.
Well, I'd recommend that you use the Keno dollars. That's, they're public, they're, you know, we, I've beat the drum kind of hard on the Keno dollars over the years. And we've used them for some pretty sketchy, well, not sketchy things. Sketchy's not a good word. Just things that I didn't think that they were deemed fit for. I mean, they're supposed to be money that, we used to, when it, when, before we had Keno dollars, when we first got here, they were used as kind of discretionary funds by the city council. And the original trail that we started here, we paid for with Keno funds. Pretty much everything in the parks at that time was. So I would recommend that you use the $70,000 from Keno. I think that's an excellent use of those dollars. And I, too, I don't want to put off doing the other piece. I'd like to see it all done at once.
For the public, the question Rich Kerr asked was how much money was in the Keno?
If I'm reading Linda's spreadsheet correctly, at the end of FY '16, we would have $33,000 remaining of Keno funds, even after we made this, made up the shortfall in the $70,000. Is that correct, Linda?
No.
Okay, come forward and explain this then.
Should I ask Linda in the first place?
We were going to have $33,000 left over. But we have a project that we didn't spend, didn't need all the money for Keno. And that was the skateboard park because we've got FEMA funds. So you take the 33, and then there was about 48 there. So we're going to use 70 of that to pay for the rest of the trails. And this year will end up, the Keno funds will only have about $9,000 left. But we don't have any project scheduled for the next year for Keno. So that'll give another year for Keno to build up. It builds up to the tune of about $60,000, $60, $65,000 a year. So, we'll just, we'll just spend it down and we'll build it up the next year. There's enough there to cover it.
It, no, it used to, it used to, we used to, when it first started, it generated an enormous amount of money.
Oh yeah, $150,000 a year, yeah, it's about halfway.
Yeah, it used to be, yeah, we're 40% of what it used to be. It was, it was, it was a gold mine. It was nice. It was so many, we got so many park projects done and so many things that, off the wish list, truly wish list, things that we wouldn't have gotten done otherwise, so, yeah.
One degree to use Keno money, get it over with and finish it out.
There's enough there, and so.
Excellent use.
So that takes us to the next part of the trail, which would be from Dempster's back to Trailhead. James has re-updated his budget that we put in, estimate that he has in there based upon the bids we got for the other section of trail that we just talked about. So that price then, he thinks, goes up about another $34,000. It's kind of what he's estimating. Linda's looking to take those additional funds out of general, out of the general fund. That's how we had funded the whole entire project, was out of general funds. And Linda, I think between that increase and deferring the park road, one park road, we had a project, we were going to turn it from gravel into asphalt. I think at the end of the year, you have us dipping into cash reserves by about 37... us dipping into cash reserves by about $37,000, not looking at operations, just the capital project.
What park road is that?
I think it's the park road that's up by the tank in Chautauqua Park.
The gravel road. And cash-wise, that project, we have about $40,000 left for that, and we're gonna kind of reserve that, move that into the next year. So within the two years, your general fund dollars will be the same over the two-year period. So...
An over-two-year period. Vote.
Right. Because next year, we have some projects that are under this. What the Trailhead to Dempsters, his 264, is about $34,000 over what you budgeted. But in the coming year, we have a park pickup we're not gonna need, and if we don't get the library roof project done, that's 20. So that's $38,000. So you're just trading out those dollars. And so, in two years, we'll be okay.
Any other questions? Of Linda?
Before she leaves, another project we have is the city auditorium. As we've talked about in the past, we are gonna look to apply for a grant to redo part of the city auditorium. It requires a match, a 50% match. We are still checking to see whether or not some of that match can come from public safety debt. Before we issue a public safety debt, we're checking to make sure that there are some of those improvements that bond council feels we may be able to use those funds as part of our match. We're trying to solidify that number. But there will be some that needs to come out of general funds to help with the match. Mark already had some money budgeted in his budget for both FY16 and '17 for to go into the auditorium. We may just look to move all those up to one year as the match, and then depending on how grant works, whether it's actually done this fiscal year and next fiscal year. So we would do that with those funds.
Is that gonna be the complete tuck-in point of the north side?
We're talking about tuck-pointing the entire building.
Entire building.
Yes. There has to be some HVAC work that needs to be done. There's some electrical work that needs to be done. We're talking about some handicap doors. And then there's also, we have some water issues down in the fire department that we need to have addressed as well. What parts of those all will be part of this grant, and which parts we'll just do on our own, we're still looking into that to see what meets the grant project requirements the best, but that's what we're trying to figure out this time. Then the final project to talk about is Second Street. As you all know, we've talked about Second Street a number of times. About two weeks ago or so, James and I had a conversation with NUR, and they essentially laid out a couple of options for us, about three options. And those options included NUR proceeding with the project as designed. However, NUR made it very clear that they didn't want to do that. They felt that there was... The newspaper article that came out last time, they didn't want any bad press, and so they didn't want to proceed with the project as designed. When I pushed them to see whether or not there was any way to make them do that, there was a long pause, and he indicated and stuff, and said I'd have to ask higher-ups to see whether or not that's something they'd even want to do. If they weren't proceeding with the project as designed, they're still looking at a bid date in September. Into October, you would maybe get a couple working days in October before they would shut the project back down and before starting up again next year. The second option was to get the Historical Society to approve the current design. If we could get that done, NUR would proceed with the project. You're still looking at a bid time in September. Construction's starting maybe in October, shutting down for the winter and starting back up next year. The third option was the Historical Society has proposed some changes to the work done on their property. And I've got some drawings here that you can see of what they proposed. The third option is to take these recommendations from the Historical Society, go back through the environmental review. An environmental review sounds as if NUR needs to get hold of State Historical Society, make sure they're okay with it. If State Historical Society says yes, it comes back, talks to the engineer, and we begin finalizing the plan. If we do that, NUR thought we would go out to bid in December, January time period, with construction being in summer of 2017. And what you see here is the proposal that Historical Society put together. There are three changes that they proposed. The first one is, the best place to see it is on page two and three of this packet. Page three shows that there's a sidewalk that comes out on the north side of the building, that today is currently proposed to be angled to the northwest and made out of concrete. On page two, you'll see the Historical Society has proposed moving it so it just goes straight north, and it's made out of brick. I didn't think that was the recommended, that's the proposed change there.
Do we have brick for that?
Yes. We've got plenty of brick sitting around. The second one is on the south side of their property. Right now, they have a gravel parking lot. I think a lot of times, the trolley is parked there, to kind of give you a visual reference of where it's at. The initial plan was to take all of that area and plant it to grass. I think the proposal back from the Historical Society is take half of the area and plant it to grass, leave half of it as a gravel parking lot for them. The third one they have is basically where the driveway intersects with the road, they want to remove the brick pavers at the... Or they want, excuse me, they want to keep the brick pavers there at that entrance. They have a decorative little piece from where the street comes on to, through the driveway, keep some decorative brick pavers in that area. Those are the three recommended changes that the Historical Society would like to see done on their portion of the project. I don't see any of those being a huge issue, both for SHIPPA or for NUR, but they'd have to run it through real quick and get that approved. Regardless of which one of those options we choose, it sounds as if construction's going to be summer of 2017.
And if this would've all went through, we could've started that this year and got it done, along with our Second Street extension on that thing. Now, if they mess around with this, we may have to close that street down twice.
Well, that would be the second part of the conversation, is if you know that this portion, the museum portion of the project, Court to Ella, is gonna occur in summer of 2017, do you proceed with doing Ella to Grant in 2016 and shut the road down twice, once in '16, once in '17, or do you push that project back and do it in 2017 and have both projects line up at the same time like you originally discussed?
You know...
Which is the recommendation of the Board of Public Works, is to push it back and do them both at the same time. Otherwise, we're gonna pave a portion of road and then not be allowed to drive on it for three months.
You know, Mr. Bidding and I never saw eye to eye on a lot of things years and years ago, but this is one project that Wayne and I worked on, begged for, tried, and we've been doing this, trying to get this through for almost 20 years. And you're telling me this entire project has to be moved back a year because of a sidewalk that wasn't angled right and a gravel parking lot?
No, I'm telling you, the project's being moved back because that's what NUR has said they're going to do at this time. Regardless of the reason why, NUR is the one who's in charge of this project. That's where they're at at this time. Now, I will tell you that the project's been delayed for seven or eight years. Some of that's on the fault of the city, some of that's the fault of NUR. Everybody's got a little bit of the blame to share on that one. So part of it's the federal guidelines. I mean, it is what it is. At this point, you're close to the finish line.
And your question, should we shut the street down twice or shut it down once? Once.
Once.
I don't think we can do it any other way. And James Burrows, our city engineer, is coming up to command the mic, apparently. You can stay here, Linda, if you like, but I know how dangerous he is.
I guess the only comment that I'd like to add to that is, just in terms of the amount of project and trying to split it up between two different contractors. I also think there's an opportunity here for us to take advantage of us bidding our project at the same time that the museum project would be done, because if there's a contractor already gonna be here doing that work, they're probably gonna bid the next section of the project as well, because they're already there, and they don't have to trip over another contractor. So I think there could be, could be, I'm not saying there will be, there could be some cost savings by doing the project at the same time. I think also, right now, with the bidding atmosphere we're in, we're still in the spring, but a lot of times, when you're looking over the next two months here, contractors are getting their work all lined up, starting December, January, February, March, and they're ready for the whole summer. You start going to bid in June and July, and they're trying to bid it, you know, they're worried about when the completion date is and can they even get it done. So if we go out for a fall bid time, now they're scheduling for the next year, and you get some really good prices, because now they're already setting up for the next fiscal year. So...
Well, and it just makes sense, because even if we bid late summer, you know, the issue is, we're not gonna get construction started, and construction's gonna have to stop, and then we're gonna be closed all winter long.
That's right. And another, you know, in terms of the quality of work, I mean, you can get some quality work done in those months, but it's a lot harder to do it. I mean, you really need to know what you're doing and, you know, to make sure compaction there's on that roadway and that you have the concrete, you know. It makes things a lot more difficult versus starting in the spring and knowing that you have some good weather that you can use.
Days are shorter.
Yes.
Days are shorter. James, question?
Yeah, sure.
Question for Tobias first, and I got a question for James. So when does the... I kind of get the feeling that part of this is because the Historical Society Board Directors changed, and so they have a little shift in what they wanted. So how long is their term? I mean, is this gonna... Is there the term of the people that are on the Historical Society Board, they still gonna be on here in a year, or are we gonna have change?
I don't know how long their terms are. Lee Coffin's here for them.
Coffin is here with the Historical Society. I think Lee just got on the board, and most of this was drafted by Lee.
The new group.
I beg your pardon?
The new people that just came on.
I don't know how many people are on their board for sure, or how many turnover every year. I don't know.
Yeah, I would just, I would, you know, I thought, and I could be wrong, because I'm not always in the whole loop, but I kind of got the impression that we had an agreement, and they got a new Board of Directors that came on, or the majority came on, and things changed because, you know, they had a different viewpoint. And I would just hate to see that happen again slightly shortly before the bid process, because obviously, the state is, you know, a little gun-shy with any bad press, and they, you know, and so I would hate to have that happen. I do agree with you, Stan, that we need to close it once. So those are my two comments. To you guys, and I have a question for James. So on page two of three of their little drawing, can you see? You don't have that?
I...
Okay. The little sidewalk that they want brick that's gonna run straight north from the museum to Ella Street, can you have a brick sidewalk be handicap accessible, or does it have to be smooth concrete?
Good question.
I believe that... I'd have to check, honestly. I can't answer that.
Because I would hate to say we're gonna do this, and then they'd have an...
I would think the biggest component to that would be the slope, because of course, our sidewalks have joints in them.
And I assume they're gonna pave it like everything else, they're gonna put a concrete base on it, and then put the...
Yeah.
Back on top.
Of course, in my memory, I remember when we first started doing these with the slopes that went down, and we had the things. They gave us a parameter, said, you know, so many the distance with so many... I mean, this is measured. This isn't a random thing. This is a federal guideline. So, and I... Not a big deal. I would just hate to have that be a stickling point that say, okay, and then you can't have it, and then we have...
I think that's a component to why we were talking to Museum about making sure that they had at least handicap accessibility at the front entrance.
Okay.
So that, you know, they can bring people in, park at the front, have them come out, get into the front door, and have that be ADA accessible. And then this path, you know, if it's not...
I just assumed that that's what this path was. So, not a big thing. I just, I'm just, one more question for you to ask at somewhere down the road.
Yeah, I can check into that. I can't answer that, I guess, off the top of my head.
Rich?
Tobias gave us three options. We have another option. There is a number four option out there. What's the project cost, Tobias, that we're talking now, our part with the federal funding? $200,000 or $160,000? $170,000, was that in the ballpark, our match?
I got my budget book.
I think our match was $150,000 or $60,000.
Budget book will show our share, including what the Historical Society's gonna put in.
I think theirs was right around $25,000.
$150,000 is what we had budgeted for this year.
And I think the Historical Society was gonna put in about $25,000, $26,000, somewhere in there.
Somewhere in there is what initially what we thought.
The other option is to totally take the state out of this thing, totally take the library historical section out, move a project that we have scheduled for next year, and I think it was Sumner Street, concrete that thing, and get it over with. We've been messing around with this thing concerning those bricks for years. Nobody can decide what they want to do on it. Let's get it moving. Let's put the project back, take everybody out of it and do it ourselves. I think it's $300,000 ballpark.
I think a couple of years ago, we talked about a work session, the number was 337 is what we had said to pave Second Street from Court to Ella.
Pave it all, get it done, get it over with, and get it fixed. Shut it down once and get it done. So that is an option four on that thing. And the only thing we'd have to work with the state, I believe, is the intersection.
The intersection with the highway.
Curb and gutter the thing, get it in concrete, and let's get this... Because that is a well-traveled main bypass through the city from West Beatrice that is used constantly. Jason told me that every time they move snow on that thing, they have to come down, get down off the retainer, or the scraper maintainer, replace bricks that have been flopped up because of the snow removal. That takes time, that takes money. As far as I'm concerned, I'm ready to go with option four. I talked to Jason Friday, and we can move that around. Granted, we're gonna lose the federal everything, but I say get it done and get it fixed. By doing it in concrete, you're not gonna have to mess with it anymore for quite a few years.
I will tell you this, and I'll probably be the bearer of bad news. You can scream at me if you want, but what I've experienced with the Sixth and Industrial intersection, regardless of what we do here at Highway 136, I'm gonna have to still submit to the state because of their controlled access. And their turnaround on Highway 77 and Sixth and, or I'm sorry, Sixth and Industrial was 60 days. So even if I get this thing designed, because I'm gonna have to go redesign, I'm gonna have to get it redesigned this year, submit it, you're still looking at 2017 for building this.
And like I said, we're still looking at 2017.
Yeah, you would.
But it's gonna get done, it's gonna get done, as far as I'm concerned, the right way.
If you do it the way you suggested here, Rich, one thing is you would have to pay the state back for all the engineering costs that they have incurred. So far, you've paid 20% of the bill. They would come back at you for the, I believe, the full amount, the remaining 80% of that. In addition, you'd have to kill another project, whether it's Bell Street, whether it's Sumner Street. You'd have to take one of the other projects that you have budgeted and get rid of that project and use those funds for this street. That's what you'd have to do.
Mr. Partey?
Is there an increase to cost with this latest adaptation?
If you remember right, all the agreement...
Their side or our side?
The agreement that we have says the Historical Society will pay for all the cost of all the improvements on their property. So if there is an increase in cost, it's on their property, and they would pay for it.
Has the latest group signed off to that as well?
That's still a binding agreement that we have between the two parties.
So it's more binding than the one we had before about...
We didn't have any other agreement as far as the design. The only one we have.
Other comments? Questions?
Now, if we proceed with moving Second Street to 2017, there are some other smaller projects that will move up this year, because they were gonna be part of the detour routes, and we were gonna try to piecemeal a few things together, hold them together, and then as detour got done, then go back and fix them. We'll try to push those up and get those taken care of. So, but there are always some other projects in that float around a little bit as a result of this project getting pushed back a year.
Are we still looking at fixing that correction line there at the hill?
One of the projects we're looking at is, yes, fixing the intersection at Fourth and Grant Street. For those of you that you know, that intersection is offset today, is you come up the hill heading eastbound on Grant Street, you come at the top of the hill, and then you have to serve over to the other lane before the oncoming traffic hits you. We're gonna look to see if it's possible to slide Grant Street to the north a little bit between Fourth and Fifth to make those intersections line up.
As was shown today, the west, I beg your pardon, the eastbound lane at that intersection meets the westbound lane, and you can actually, your vehicles would be head-on. meets the westbound lane, and you can, actually, your vehicles would be head-on.
And before we make that a detour route and send all the traffic from Second Street up that intersection, we thought it might be best to look to see about correcting that intersection before we run even more traffic through there.
Regarding the Second Street project, I guess my thought is, is that we've been at this a long time, Rich. I, I understand it.
I'm sorry, Mary, it just, it just irritates me.
I understand. And, and there has been some irritating things that have occurred over time. I really think that it would be in the best interest if we had a cooperative effort to try to work with the Historical Society, try to keep the, the brick pavers in place to, I guess, if nothing else, continue to enhance that historical atmosphere where the museum is located. And hopefully, NUR and SHPO can come to some terms. Again, we'll have to do another evaluation, environmental study. But how long would that take, Tobias, conceivably?
It can take as long as 60 days, because that's how long SHPO has to respond back. But my indication is, I think Lee talked to SHPO before he drew up his plan. I don't expect it'll take quite that long.
And I think the modifications that have been made are reasonable modifications. Do they need a parking lot? Yeah, they do need a parking lot, whether it's gravel or concrete or, or whatever, makes no difference to me. I think this would be another step in a, in a cooperative effort to try to, to work with another public entity.
And I have no problem cooperating for any, anything with them. It's just, one person needs drained in.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
That's where we're going to proceed.
All right.
Something else changes? We'll be back and let you know. I think next is the legislative update. There's what, about seven more days left in the session. It's getting fairly short. The big one's 958.
Thanks, James.
And they keep jockeying around what they're doing with 958. If you've read the paper at all lately, you've seen the latest thing is decrease the amount of the credit back and provide some tax relief, but not as much as they originally hoped for. As far as the city goes, they personally have left the cities alone, they've eyeballed the state community colleges.
Has it been fun, Bob?
Well, we're, we're, they now have taken that out as well, so.
It's, it's very fluid at this point, but other than that, there hasn't been a whole lot going on that would concern the city a great deal lately, so.
That brings us to the end of our agenda. At this time, I would recommend that we go into executive session.
Mayor, I believe that the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 7:54 PM for the protection of public interest, discuss contract negotiations.
Sorry. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claywell, that we go into executive session at 7:54 PM for